All right, let's call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Tonight's meeting is a public hearing. And I would first ask the city clerk to read the rule.
Mayor Burden?
I'm here.
Councilor Evers?
Here.
Councilor Farmer?
Here.
Councilor Ruth B.
Here.
Mayor Sutcliffe?
He told me he would check in as soon as he gets out of traffic and back on where he can get online.
Councilor Rick?
Here.
Councilor Hart? City Manager Alba?
Here.
City Clerk Van Damme?
I'm here.
Finance and Administrative Services Commissioner Hornet?
Here.
Fire Commissioner Henderson?
I'm here.
Police Chief Chalero?
I'm here.
Other groups of directors of the district? Director Tom, Development Director Martin?
Here.
Ben White from the State Department.
All right, very good. And for the record, Councilor Hart is now here as well.
Andy Sammer?
The purpose of the hearing today is for council to determine whether or not to revoke the business license of the Townhouse Motel. After all the evidence and testimony presented very open, record, public meetings, city council will deliberate the status of the business license for Townhouse Motel and make a motion in accordance with their deliberation. Appearance of fairness. Council members, I may ask each of you, all at the same time, does any city council member have any interest in the property or the application, or do you own property within a 300-foot distance of the property subject to the application? Does any city council member stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of his hearing?
No.
Can you hear and consider the application in an unfair and objective manner?
Yes.
Yes.
Has anyone engaged in any ex parte communications with either proponents or opponents of the application? If you have, place on the record the substance of any such communications so that interested parties have the opportunity at the hearing to rebut the communication. Members of the audience, does anyone wish to challenge on appearance of fairness grounds participation in the matter by any member of the hearing body, including reasons for the request? So please approach the microphone in front. The laws of the state of Washington provide that during the tenancy of any quasi judicial proceeding, no member of a decision-making body may engage in ex parte communications with opponents or proponents with respect to the proposal which is the subject of the proceeding. This prohibition does not preclude a member of a decision-making body from seeking in a public hearing specific information or data from such party relative to the decision if both the requests and the results are a part of the record. Nor does such person's prohibition preclude correspondence between a citizen and his or her elected official if any such correspondence is made a part of the record when it pertains to the subject matter of a quasi judicial proceeding. The ground rules for the hearing and the manner for which it will proceed are as follows. Staff report. This will be no more than 20 minutes. Opponents of the proposal or the respondents, no more than 20 minutes. Public testimony on the application, first by proponents and then by opponents, three minutes per person. A reply by proponents to comments made in point B or C. We're going to give you three minutes to reply. A reply by opponents to comments made in C or D. We'll give you three minutes to reply. At that point, we close the hearing and it's time for council deliberation. There may be an opportunity if very few people give testimony, or if we have a lot of time left over to allow some people to continue if they have a great deal to say, but at the beginning, we are going to be very strict on that three-minute rule. All right, now the city clerk.
All persons wishing to give testimony today please stand, including six staff, city council members, and members of the public. So anyone in the room that wants to make any particular comments, you now need to stand. While each of you who is expected to testify today, please raise your hands. Do each of you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony that you give? If so, please answer "I do."
I do.
All right, first item, staff report. And city manager.
I will turn this over to Trevor Martin, our community economic director.
Hart.
Again, for the record, my name is Trevor Martin, the Community Economic and Government Director for the City of Sunset, Washington. I have a report, I will not read it verbatim, but I will come out with a report going into detail on the summary of the text regarding this revocation matter. Pursuant to SMC 5.56-010B, the Sunset City Council will revoke the business license. On the following basis, national violations of terms and conditions of which issues, violation of ordinances or laws authorizing the regulating, regulating the license or permit, or regulating the business to a purpose for which the license or permit is intention of infractions or offenses under such an ordinance or number four, wrongful behavior of substantial character and of a public concern in relation to the license activity provided when reasonably necessary in interest of protection of health, safety, peace, welfare. Pursuant to SMC 5.56-010C, for any such license, permission shall be carefully revoked, the city shall hold a public hearing giving the on its two weeks. For the two weeks. Pursuant to SMC 8.32.8.1, responsible person
Also correct.
Violation of the correction date listed. The city shall light up offenses for the infractions. IPMC 106.3, prosecution of violations. Person failing to comply with a notice of violation of person failing to comply with a notice of violation of order or orders served in court IPMC may be guilty of other penalties. An indeed, a public notice was filed for this hearing in terms with SMC Chapter 5.56. A posting of property and notification to business owner was on August 29, 2022, at approximately 4:00 p.m. And an updated sign was posted on August 17. And copy of the business license was provided in the package. This was also provided in the package and a notice of the public hearing. Finding, moving into the list of findings. On April 8, 2019, Sunset, Sunset City notice from a resident located one of the units of the motel, say the room was all of those. But some of those conditions included mold, kitchen ventilation, running water, improper plumbing, wiring. Result of the initial inspection, enforcement action on April 8, 2019, and shut down five rooms. Part of the property owner to apply for permits to mitigate the observed issues. Terms were applied for on June 11, 2019. Progress of third up until September 24, 2020. Seems that through 24 official inspection section, updated by the city of Sunset and the applicant has not required for the building permits. The permits letter was mailed on March 29, 2022. Unknown at this time of January 24, 2020, code enforcement made contact for rebuild storm water drain. On 18, 2022, code enforcement made contact with the property for court of death on July 15. Contact for abandoned vehicle. And since the beginning of 2022, the City of Sunset Police Department had best of for multiple issues, including assault, shot fire, shot fired trespassing and others. That can be found on the on August 29, 2022, city officials served the property with a notice of business license revocation. And warned the business owner that there would have a meeting, a public hearing and in conclusion, the Townhouse Motel has continued to operate with multiple code time violations and general nuisance issues that go unaddressed by business owners. Violations include, put on limits to failure to finalize permits. And police calls for the business owner to not contact the City of Sunset in any attempt to remedy and for the following reasons listed under SMC National violations in terms of license issues. Abducting infractions or offenses in which ordinance actions or offenses under such an ordinance or law. which was violation of ordinances or laws authorizing or regulating the license or permit or number four, wrongful behavior of substantial character and of public concern in relation to the license activity. Number five, when reasonably in interest of protection of health, safety, peace, or welfare. The Townhouse Motel charter's business license. And see that recommendation as
Just after
Al, do you have a brief moment you'd like to see actions from your department?
Say, good evening, everybody. In regards to our responses, the Sunset Police Department responds quite greatly, not only in a reactive but also proactive manner. It is very known, it's very incredible in the sense that if there's significant criminal activity that goes there, that reside there or visits there. And not necessarily are all the folks guessed there that end up there and potentially ending up in or conducting criminal activity or being suspended or you're scared of that, but the Townhouse Motel is something that definitely is problematic for us, problematic for the city, and problematic for the area for quite some time.
And I am glad to make a comment. So when you look back at 60 calls for service from January, this is taking money from every citizen of this city that pays refund or police excessive amount of calls means that everyone that lives in Sunset and pays property tax is paying civil to this spread of business and conduct business. That's not fair to our citizens. Not fair to the people that live here and work hard. It's just something that has to change. I'm just saying this from my heart. But that's really fundamentally why we brought this forward, because we're all paying for it. Not just that we're hearing is impacted by
Mr. Garrison, do you or your client have any comments on the city clerk?
For the record, Douglas Garrison representing Fred Kim Townhouse Motel. Was contacted regarding this matter by the Kims, who I've known for I would like to preface my remarks by saying that not a light or transient matter that the council is taking up. They're talking about somebody's wife and someone's life. The Townhouse Motel has runs the temporary rental facility, a hotel. It is therefore governed by certain state statutes that are required to obtain a license from the state to run a hotel or salary. They have done so. They are also required, have certain requirements in the granting of that license. The photos you're scrolling through there that have been provided, first of all, for the record, I object to their admission or consideration fact that they're two and a half to three years old. They're not timely. We don't know who took them or why they were taken or what they intend to portray. There hasn't been any testimony yet to indicate what they are, where they are, who took them. I have made up five packets of current photographs. Understanding from the motion, fully counsel to revoke the license guarded rooms 15, 16, 17, and 20. And if I can approach your clerk, I'll hand over that, which also includes inspection for the electrical a bill to the Kims for $8,630 for updated and code approved electrical services that they I only have five, I'm sorry for asking folks to connect you. The city came and inspected. The owners in no way resisted inspection and have attempted to comply with all of the city's directive. All of the doors that were tagged have a date of, I think it's April 19 or 21, it's hard to read, of 2020, we're now in September of 2022. Those photos simply do not reflect today's reality. The rooms in question are subject to transient people who come through here and commit various acts of vandalism. The Kims rented rooms to persons, then are rented rooms, have guests that are neither supposed to be there or not wanted, or people that have forced themselves on the tenants. And graffiti, the entire inside of the room with gang graffiti, were forced to go in and repair that, hang over it, and what have The rooms have been essentially gutted, replaced, rebuilt with modern stove plumbing.
I apologize for that.
I would also note that for reasons I cannot fathom, the Kims on their own properties have been approached by agents of the city and forced to put license tags on their own vehicles. Vehicles that they own on private property. I'm also apprised that they have a tenant that stays some time who is severely disabled and suffers from rather dramatic deformity who owned his automobile, and his automobile, which did not operate at that time, was lifted up to a tow truck and towed off. I don't know what legal authority you have to do that. If it's on, if it's on public property and is abandoned, certainly you can bring the bare whatever laws or codes are there, and I encourage you to do so, but not on public property. This photograph here, which can't do anything other than show it to you, shows all these plastic bags and boxes and, I don't know, a vacuum cleaner or something outside the room. That's not a fair and accurate portrayal of what's there. This is the person's property that was kicked out the next day after the tag rooms passed. It's not there now. And then there's other appliances that are stacked along the building in your packet somewhere. All of these appliances here that are stacked alongside the building are a result of the rooms being gutted and overhauled. The Kim hired a 20-yard or 30-yard dumpster to come in and take it out. It was there two or three days. Let's go on, not fair enough. They're served with a notice. That's fine and proper engineers and street vendors are in their municipal stuff, that's fine. They are then subjected to about a 24-inch by 24-inch red, flaming red poster on the shore of the store that's not currently registered. And then the next day, a four-foot by four-foot sign put on their property with this notice of a public hearing. What is the purpose? That other than to subject them to humiliation, embarrassment, and ridicule? And then I have to understand, as of yesterday morning, that your city manager actually participated in putting the sign there? Opening up this city to a charge of torturous interference of business? It's just, I never stop being flattered by what goes on. We have investigated the possibility of putting up fence in the back of their property. There is a cornicea on the highway and, or the or whatever it is. And people go there, they're walking, they're on foot, and they trespass through the Kim's property. Kims asked them not to trespass. They are subject to vile and inappropriate language. They're given the same gestures. And they call the police, and the police very seldom respond. Okay? I have whatever documents that were provided to you pursuant to the public records request, and they say warrant service. The owners, the Kims, have no control over someone who's on their property that has the warrant that they're up. They're calling for help, but then that help is being used against them and a motion to revoke their license. Mr. and Mrs. Kims have made their life here. They have two children and graduated from this high school. They were both valedictorians of this community. They are simple people, trying to get along. I draw your attention to RSW 4916-250. Unfair practices or violations of public or accommodation in the public. It shall be an unfair practice for any person or the person's agent or employee to commit an act which directly or indirectly results in any distinction, restriction, or discrimination for the requiring of any person to pay a larger sum than the uniform rate charged other person, or the refusing or withholding of any person the admission, patronage, customs, presence, frequenting, dwelling, staying, or lodging in any place of public resort, accommodation, assembly, or amusement. In other words, if the owners refuse service to someone that looks shaky or has a reputation that is not desirable, they're subject to penalty by the state of Washington. On the one hand, if they don't rent to someone that they don't necessarily want to rent to, they're subject to penalty. If they do rent to them, they're now subject to having their license revoked. How do you win this game? I don't know the answer. I counsel them that perhaps putting a fence on the back of property to prevent transient foot traffic going through their property. We have also checked into hiring of security for perhaps nighttime hours to patrol there. It's $25 an hour and it would be thousands of dollars per month to do so. Thought perhaps it would be a good idea to maybe hire someone for, say, two months if that can slow down the traffic. I don't, I don't know. The cost appears to be prohibitive, but they are trying to perhaps establish a fence. I invite this council or any of the agents to go and physically walk over the property and look through the rooms. And see for yourself. There were conditions which were substandard. Those have been corrected. There are people there that have problems. They have mental problems. Their rent is paid by social security. That is true. I just, I cannot express to you the frustration and the outrage that I have the way these people are being treated. These are members of your community, law-abiding, tax-paying group. And I'm sure there are other properties, commercial properties, that have probably similar problems. They're doing their best. They have spent money. One of the receipts in there is for over $8,000 for code electric appropriate rooms to bring them up to code and to do the repairs. They had one bid for $90,000, somebody attempting to gouge them. Anybody's business license should be revoked with that guy. I don't know what else I can tell you. I don't know what else I can do. I also would note that the Kims are Koreans. They're Korean, to stretch. Their base language is Korean. But they're comfortable in English, I think they get through this. They see authority as absolute in their culture. I'm not qualified to speak on it all, I can do is tell you my observation. When a government agency of any description tells them they're doing something wrong, they turn in on themselves and start questioning themselves. What are we doing wrong? How do we fix it? Whereas perhaps my ethnicity is the first thing we do is we ask the question, why is the government doing this? They don't do that, they don't think I referred earlier to this man that's on social security that has this rather pronounced disability. He towed his car away and I thought, well, he must be just a terrible, awful person. You're real undesirable. So we checked. He has no criminal record of any kind. Of any description. And he, you know, he doesn't do well, he has these hands, his hand problem, his hand You people look at this gentleman and you see an owl. The Kims look at him and they see a human being. And I don't know how we got here. And I don't think I want to know the answer. So if you wish, go and look at the property yourself before you make your decision. If my word's not good enough, I'm okay with that. If you want to see for yourself. You want to send your agents over there, your code enforcement, your inspector, your building inspector. But look. My understanding is that there was one requirement that was not met, and that was to ask for a follow-up inspection. Apparently the Kims neglected to do that. We admit that. We admit that. There wasn't an apparent required follow-up inspection to see if the requirements had been met. You can't simply ignore the fact that the pandemic played a role here in getting help with electricians, with plumbers, with sheeprock people. We couldn't get them. We couldn't find them. We couldn't hire them. They weren't available. He did a lot of this work himself. I've seen these rooms. They're fine. They're rent-appropriate, dollar-appropriate. So I ask every person here that's in a position of authority to consider what you're doing. And I asked rhetorically our chief of police and all the authorities there, if this place is closed, is your crime rate going up or down? If it's closed and there's nobody there, that is going to turn into an absolute nightmare, a disaster. The Kims are there. They live there. Mr. Kim stays up sometimes 2:00, 3:00 a.m. in the morning, watching who's coming and going, and making sure that things are okay. So this is not just a pro forma, pro forma activity here. This is something that affects the lives of a lot of people. And I would ask you to not revoke your business license. Ask whatever questions you want to ask, conduct your own investigation, put whatever restrictions you want, or make whatever requirements you want, but don't shut these people's lives down.
Mr. Garrison? We will not take public testimony on the application. Here are the rules regarding public testimony. Testimony will be heard first from proponents. Proponents are those who are in favor of the business license revocation. Then by opponents, opponents are those who are opposed to revoking the business license. All speakers must speak into the microphone, give their names and addresses. All comments should be addressed to city council, should be relevant to the application, and should not be of a personal nature. There is a three-minute time limit, so get to your point. Avoid repetitive comments. Unruly behavior such as booing or hitting and harassing remarks are strictly prohibited. Those of you who stood up at the beginning and were sworn in, you are able to give testimony. Those who came in late, unfortunately, you were not here for that, so at this point, you're not going to be able to give testimony. So we'll start first with those who are in favor of the revocation of the business license. First person, please come up, approach the microphone.
My name is David Swale. I own Valley All Parks at 2016 Street. I'm two years. I'm not concerned with the living conditions. The northern people here are from, who are about to pick up the kids. Being a neighbor to the townhouse costs me $1,000 every year. There are vehicles that go into, open catalytic converters, drill holes in my gas tanks that I haven't been doing it. Correction, I got the I L video on my sidewalk with the drill. I'm the townhouse. Is here one that you stole? Yes. The gentleman that got his vehicle, he picked up. I know him personally. He used to be my neighbor. And the house next door would be beautiful. He drives out of the house in front of my kids. I constantly would stand in front of their driveway, hitting license plates, pictures, and giving them to the police department. Personally, the gentleman that owned the home lost that because they weren't paying. So a week ago, I had two confrontations with guys that were high out of reliance on my property. One of them, I told to leave my property, and we got into a confrontation. Saturday, I closed my store at 4 o'clock, so I sat my partner. I got pictures of the guy irritating on the vehicle on the corner of the warehouse. I'm going to get this cleaned up.
Sir? Person?
Oh, yeah, I'm here. One person from the Dallas County Department. I'm just here to speak that one person's livelihoods, who run a business, should not outweigh the livelihood of all citizens of this city. Ma'am, where are you to go?
Yeah, okay, perfect. We don't want to double check.
Okay, I did. I'd like to see the other people for that. Does not outweigh the other citizens of this city's right to have a space and livelihood. It does not outweigh the rights of the neighboring businesses, which is well to have a business who's been in it for many years. I have some questions on the license city council. If they do not revoke the business license, it would be a huge challenge. I am the challenger. First of all, the towing of a vehicle off of private property. Who initiated that? Was that the city? Or was that the private owner that did that? My neighbor said that the tow company cannot come on to private business and tow a vehicle off private property without the own property owner requesting it. I challenge Mr. Garrison to provide proof who requested that, when it happened. Otherwise, I think the tow company would be in trouble for stealing a vehicle. So hopefully, you have the proof, shown that it was legitimately requested by the property owner to have that done. You stated, you stated that he does live outside, which is good, so he can see what he's allowing to have. I want to know if he's ever trespassed anyone while the trespassing charge keeps people off his property through the police department, which can be done. Has he ever evicted anyone from the condo? And I'll say condo, but I don't think it's a temporary, day-to-day living situation. These are private homes for people whose children are being picked up by their school bus. Has he evicted anyone for not following the rules of his property? If I was renting someone's house or apartment or bedroom in my house, and they didn't follow my rules, they'd be evicted. So I question you, have you seen any proof that he's evicted anyone who didn't follow their standards? Again, I just want to stress, stress that his livelihood is taking resources away from other needs and expenses from the citizens to do their jobs, whether it be traffic control, monitoring, looking for DUIs, and all the safety that the rest of the citizens, the 18,000 citizens of city of anybody deserve to have. Finally, local and political ignorance about a problem on your property is not a defense and to being held responsible for keeping your property under surveillance.
Next individual? Next. Opposed to the license revocation. I'm sorry? Yes, you may go ahead.
She looked at four of him.
Oh, I went to four of them. Sorry. I'm very late.
Were you, you, okay, no, then you may not. Do you, I'm sorry. Split it down.
I didn't know.
Okay. Then those who are opposed to the business license revocation, please approach the microphone, state your name, address, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
I think you said something about the I E B. I put a lot of advertising on anybody, forty, fifty, fifty. I have a change problem again and again, just I do. I don't know how much you associate with selling this homeless people with the buy, pay, pay, and et cetera, because nothing to them. By, you know, the gentleman said something about, um, they have something on the town model. It's straight through. So now my intention, so goal is to put up a fence toward the back where he didn't do it. I just want to go backwards. All that I have, but I, you know, mostly trespassing activities, whatever, equals one. But I have, I am out there, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, people, I speak through, pay for you through, walking through, stopping them, please, please, to a point, they threaten me, they do whatever, to a point, I am not calling police. Yes, they do come to a point, they're not there anymore. I have put many, many, like I said, forty things, but no trespassing, et cetera. They do not care. Do I evict somebody? Yes. I have many, many.
Please address the council, sir, not the I E B.
Yes, I'm sorry. But about repairing mine, it wasn't by room, it was. But I tried to follow up with the way it's supposed to be done. To a point, it took a while. Basically, kind of like here and that. Finding my electricity, kind of like, over thousands.
Thank you. Other comments from those opposed to the revocation of the license? Okay, I've seen none. Mr. Garrison, do your clients have any closing or rebuttal comments?
Well, I admire Mr. Kim, who has been handling guys. Because he's, not what he does. Very humble and polite gentleman, but he obviously feels that the action states. Simple fact is that many in this community have simply given up calling. My line of work, I see this all the time. I recently had pieces of furniture stolen from the back of my property during some construction work. That's a sad comment, Eric. I don't know if it's a lack of resources or what. They are doing their best to comply with everything asked them to do. This is a near challenge to see how. Vehicle was stolen. My understanding of what's done at the best. That's right. You can't just hook somebody's vehicle up and tow it. Clear the investigation on that. There is a property here in this community. I drive by it every day. Five one seven brand. It's a two vehicle that is a pickup truck and a Mercedes Benz lot. I buy them every morning. Wronged by a gentleman who passed away in 2015. I don't know what's wrong. Nobody has hooked up a tow truck to those. I make photographs of those, but I couldn't get them done. What I would propose is perhaps to perhaps follow on inspections, report back to the council, finding the cause. I'm not going to ask anybody to get an administrative search warrant, which is our warrant, which we have to do. Because the Kims welcome for advising council, and so forth. Perhaps you do that. You want to send Mr. Stan to our premises. But when I was over there the other day, just standing there asking them to show me what's going on, there are people walking through there that come from the harness seal with their plastic bags with their purchases. They just walked through this property, whether they want to or not. Answer is, let's, people are going to rent a room to make a condo. I guess that's on all of us in society in general, but it's not necessarily the latest fee to the owners of the townhouse model or any other property. Somebody falls down and starts grabbing their checks, and an ambulance comes, and they need an address to go to on the highway, 509 Highway 12. So they have all of these generations of EMS reports, police. Do they necessarily mean what they say they are? I get that much times, but I would ask that this council not revoke his business license. Work with him and go and look and see what he's done. Place whatever reasonable restrictions you're, council, if you need to cover.
Harrison? City staff? Any additional staff comments?
Name is Tom Trevor.
No, I think that, I think there's more to support. Essentially, it's brought this on, especially the type of conduct that keeps occurring there, and that goes on whether it's indoor or out. The mention of a deformed individual is not the only individual there. He's not the only person that gets contacted. He's not the only person that here may not be causing issues. It's relatively widespread in that, in that particular business or that property in store. There are long-term folks there that do reside there. Certainly, it has been more than a challenge for the police department to, to deal with, and also for the community members and business owners that directly affects, happens to their businesses, to the things that, that they are trying to keep safe and keep moving forward. I've been there, I've been there many times to that particular location, and very few are they capable. So the command, for the reasons that may be disclosed later, but it certainly commands attention, and unfortunately, it is unfavorable attention. And I can respect Mr. Kim's, his comments and his testimony, and now it's all these years where he's discussing prevention. I have a hard time. And that's, that's primary thing that's mine. Long time ago. Anyways, it is, it is, continues to remain problematic for us.
Other comments? I've seen none. Moving on. City council members, any questions from any members of the city council?
When is the last time that anybody, you know, checked out the, all of the rooms to see what shape they all are?
Has there been inspection of all of them?
The last time that I know, city staff.
Um, the last time that I know, city staff... And there were some... Now, there were some improvements that were done, but...
But no inspection has been done of the entire building itself?
When were these pictures taken? The ones that Mr. Garrison gave us?
This morning.
This morning?
And follow up to that. How old are the photographs that were presented to the, to the council? When were those taken?
Twenty nineteen.
Other questions from council?
It's my understanding that if you, to remove a car from a property, it ha, there has to be some sort of posting of, uh, don't leave your car here kind of thing. Car, car, there's always that little sign and then they can say the name of whatever the towing company is. And isn't that... Well, I, let me change my question here, because I'm interested as to whether or not, if that vehicle was considered abandoned and that's why it was moved. I'm, I'm confused just why it was moved. Do we have an actual report?
Yeah. So does anybody from staff know the vehicle that is a question here and why it was towed?
Hell of all, I don't think I know the exact...
Mr. Driscoll, would you be able to answer your questions regarding a vehicle that's so from the townhouse motel?
Are we, I am not sure which one we're referring to. If it's the last vehicle that I towed, uh, yes, it was, it had been abandoned in the parking lot in public view for approximately over, a little over a year. I, I had had the subject move the vehicle from the backside on warehouse. He moved it into the parking lot. I advised him that he needed to get rid of it. Uh, there were people living in the back of it, randomly, just random people living in the back of it. Um, I tagged the vehicle with twenty-four hour notice. The registered owner was advised of the notice. I followed up and it had not been moved or brought to current condition, so it was towed.
That answer your question, Mr. Harrison?
And at, at that time, it was on the property, the townhouse motel property?
Correct.
And then my second question is, is the property, um, Mr. Kim's property, is it, do you have signs up for illegal parking?
Yes.
So it's...
But he wasn't illegal.
Okay.
He had the owner. He wasn't...
Okay.
He wasn't made that call or...
But it wasn't your call? You didn't make the call regarding?
I know the week is long. He just doesn't have the money.
Okay.
Other questions?
Two concerns.
Mr. Beal?
Um, looking at the pictures from twenty nineteen and the ones that Mr. Garrison brought up, I'm concerned on how it got that bad and saved that until it was caught and then he fixed it. I just can't see anybody living in those kind of conditions, so that's a... Other concern is, um, he says he's been trying to stop people walking through his property. He's been doing this for years and he feels out and he feels threatened. Why isn't there a fix out? What are you waiting for? You know it's a problem. Your lawyer told you there was a problem. Why isn't that fixed and what else is going on? That's my two main concerns and I'm that.
I can respond if this allows it.
Mr. Garrison, you may respond. Briefly.
He rented the room to one person who... Having alcohol or... And he shared all of his stuff. He just completely destroyed the room. They destroyed everything in it. They ripped holes in the walls. And the police were called. The police response was, quote, "We can't do anything." I disagree. I say you arrest him and charge him with malicious mischief, create class D cell, and he's punishable by ten years in prison. And if you don't want to do that, issue a citation for malicious mischief in the third. Prosecute him here through to the municipal court. Answer is, we couldn't do anything for him. This is what he is subjected to. Rent a room, they pay the daily rent, they have certain rights. Wolves accumulate. They, they live. In what probably, I hope, none of us here in conditions are. They're not clean and hygienic people. There's pet clothing thrown on electrical outlets. We use, are in a rental business. Things like this happen. And so some of those photographs you have from twenty nineteen, they're pretty bad. They're pretty bad, but they've been corrected. And it's not something you can take overnight, especially when there's a pandemic on. We're not trying to hide behind that. We all have the same problem. As far as defense, I agree with you. It should be, it's something that's done, but it's also not exactly... I get permits, we've got to find the property lines, we've got to put it... I liked them as of a week ago. Home was a built in a day. It's a piece of land that belonged to a shovel.
Thanks, Mr. Garrison. We've got three minutes left, which means we're not going to decide this tonight. Um, I want to make a couple of comments and then we're going to continue this on to the next time. First of all, um, somebody made the comment that we see an individual at Mr. Kim's hotel as an animal, not as a human being. And I am somewhat resentful of that comment. There is no human being on this planet that I classify as an animal. I do not like being suggested that I or any other member of this council or a member of city staff look at hu, human beings in the city of Sunnyside as animals. That was an inappropriate comment. We... We have to deliberate this. We're going to have to continue this for our next regular city council meeting. It will be held at five thirty and our next meeting is going to be September, I'm sorry, I miss all of the due... September twenty-sixth. So in these chambers, September twenty-sixth at five thirty PM, we will continue this. Council still needs to deliberate. Um, Mr. Garrison, you have invited, Mr. Kim, you have invited members of staff to come visit your building. I'm sure that that can be arranged. Uh, we have two issues, though. We have the condition of your building and we also have the actions of your tenants. And you can fix the building, but you have still got to think about the actions of your tenants. If people have been witness vandalizing buildings and causing property damage and then returning to your hotel and they are your guests, then there is a problem and that's going to come up in discussion, so be aware of that. So for tonight, this meeting is closed at six twenty-eight and fifty-six seconds. And we will see you all in two weeks to continue this. Thank you, everybody. Okay. City council meeting, regular city council meeting.